Recording in progress.
All right, at this time I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, councilmembers, we have before us a, an agenda. Looking for a motion on that? Brendan?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
All right, looking for a second? Nancy?
I'll second.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, first item on the agenda is a recognition of someone who's been of service in our community for a very, very long time. He's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read what we have on a certificate for you. All right. I'm going to talk louder. I'll restart. Ron has been a member of our community, a resident for 62 years in many different ways. So, tonight we wanted to honor your service to the community. So, at this time, Ron, could you please step forward to the microphone? We're not gonna let you talk too long, but in a moment, we're gonna have you say a few words if you would like. But at least, I wanted to be able to read what we've prepared for you. It's a, it's an appreciation and recognition for your service, and I'll present you with that in a minute, but first, I'd like to read it to the public. It says sincere appreciation and recognition is extended to Ron Oys for being a 62-year resident with extensive dedicated service to the community as a member of the Crystal Fire Department, 1966 to 1988. Did we get that right?
You're right.
All right. And as an active and long-term serving member of the Crystal Lions, helping with Wednesday night steak fry fundraisers, roadside cleanups, and other events prior to his retirement, volunteering in our community while working full-time for the Northern States Power. So, that's the recognition certificate that, that we wanna present to you, and I'd like to present to you that at this time. So, I'm gonna come out by you.
Okay. I appreciate that, but I just... Normal living. You gotta treat your community like you like it. That's why I stayed here.
I wanna say, first of all, I wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
For your service.
Yep.
You think it's normal. You think it's normal to serve your community the way you've served it for all these years.
Right.
I think, I think that is what deserves the recognition. I wish everybody would, would, would serve their community like that in all the different fashions. So, we really wanted to recognize that, and, and that's what makes a community special. You've done it in the mines, you've done it with the fire department. Every time I see you, you're always positive and encouraging. Sometimes you try to give me a little crap, but that's okay.
Yeah, but that's just normal.
That's just normal, too. That's okay. I think it's normal, too, so.
Well, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Want me to turn around? Before you go away, I wanna make sure there, there isn't anything that the council wants to ask of you. I'm hoping they have something.
Thank you. Russel boy. He's too big for me.
Did anybody have anything for Ron before we, we let him go?
Oh, just, thank you so much, Ron, for all you've done, and I was asking you before the meeting started, how the corn feed went this year, because you had a lot of events that were canceled due to COVID in 2020. So, hoping you had a very tremendous return this year, and thanks again for all you do.
Well, thank you. I really do appreciate it, but I just... That's you!
So humble.
All right. Just, just for logistic purposes, you don't have to stay for this entire meeting. It's a fairly short one, you're welcome to, but it's not rude to pick up and leave. Just so you know. All right. So, next we have a consent agenda before us, and I will read that into the record at this point. Approval of the minutes from the following meetings, the city council work session from October 19th.
Thank you again, Reece.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You got it. The council meeting from October 19th as well. And then, approval of the list of license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council that is on file in Christie's office, approval of a resolution accepting donations, and then, approval of the 22 regular city council meeting work session schedule. Those are our items for the consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that? Brendan?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
Are all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Is everybody here wishing to speak during open forum? Anybody for open forum? Seeing no one... Oh, we got one. We, we got a taker.
I really appreciate Mark Ray's efforts in resolving this puzzle, this, this galkey pond renovation. I just wanted to let you know that it's a great job, and it's hard work to get through all of this, but I appreciate it.
Rumor has it it's five years' worth of work. So, yeah. Thank you, thank you for recognizing that. That's awesome. Anyone else here wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing no one, we will pause open forum, move on to public hearing. We have a public hearing to receive comment on the proposed charter amendments, the council's consideration of the second reading of an ordinance amending the city charter, and a resolution authorizing summary publication. So, we have our city attorney here, Troy Gilchrist. Would you like to address the council?
I would love to, Mr. Mayor and council. Well, thank you and good evening. As the council is well aware, the city's charter commission some months ago pursued a comprehensive review and update of the city charter. They worked to develop proposed amendments, and each were reviewed by the council over several work sessions. As you recall, there were some back and forth that occurred with the council making changes, and then the charter commission making changes as well, and eventually, they finalized a set of amendments and voted unanimously to forward the amendments to the city council with the recommendation that they be adopted as presented. The council, and of course, as I explained before, the, the council adopts charter amendments by ordinance, or that's the process that's being followed, and the council conducted the first reading of that ordinance at its October 19th meeting, passed the first reading. Now, the ordinance with the charter amendments are before the council to conduct a public hearing, which is required by the statute, and then, if the council desires to act to adopt the ordinance, to put the, to adopt the amendments, as you know, 'cause I've told you multiple times, the council needs to act unanimously in order to adopt this ordinance, and if adopted, then the amendments do not go into effect for 90 days. So, if you do act to approve the, the ordinance, there is also a summary resolution in your packet to approve summary language for publication. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Questions from the council? I would be surprised if there were. All right. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for testimony, and I think we have one person so far who is wishing to speak. Dave, if you could please step forward. Full name and address, if you would, before we start, and then go to the...
Dave Beeson, 6603 3670 North. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. I understand the need for periodic updates and changes. No issues with, no concern with what I read, but I do have objections to a couple, a couple of them. The new section, 804, about special business districts, I understand that's not uncommon, so, in spirit, that's fine, but subdivision six talks about taxes and service charges, but it doesn't define how they're imposed. Section seven, or subdivision seven talks about refunds if the district were removed, and that clearly says that they'll be equally distributed. So, it would seem that if we're gonna equally distribute, we should define how we're gonna impose taxes if we're gonna define how we impose, how we give refunds. So, I think there's some rewrite that could be done there to clarify the imposition of taxes and service charges. Section 310, I understand that that was for, you know, specifics I've intended to deal with. 310 is, what is 310? 310 is special, excuse me, amendments and repeals of ordinances. I understand those edits to be related to typeface and font of how it's published. However, it seems like it got rid of the, removed the requirement to publish in the official newspaper of the city, whereas, you know, section 308, that's for new ordinances, that does require publication in the, in the newspaper. So, I would ask that the section 310 be rewritten to put the publication back in there. You can deal with the formatting issue with the, still should be published when we're making an amendment for a removal of ordinance. My biggest concern is with the new section 36, 3.065, interim ordinances. I don't believe this is needed at all. Charter already has procedures in place for normal business, as well as emergency ordinances. I find this section way too broad. You know, what is interim? When is it used? When does it end? And it also allows for an ordinance to be adopted at the meeting that was introduced with no requirement for prior notice. It's me rushing into an ordinance is problematic. I guess I've witnessed, and I think you have, you know, temporary governmental actions going beyond reasonableness, creating, destroying lattheads and property, and sometimes in direct conflict to equal protection and due process. I don't believe this section is needed at all, because you already have provisions in place to do your normal business, including the emergency. I would ask that this be removed in whole from the proposed amendments. So, with that, I ask that the charter or the council reject the amendments as written, send it back to commission for edit and revision. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Did you have any comments on some of those?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to respond to those.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, I'll take them in reverse order. With respect to the interim ordinance, if you recall, that's a, a section that I recommended the council consider, or the charter commission actually initially consider adding. This is an authority that cities generally have, because you're a charter city with the two readings. What that has created for charter cities in the past is a real bind where you need to act quickly on something, and that's not an emergency, doesn't qualify as an emergency, you can't act on, on that. But it's something that requires immediate attention. Usually, it's in the, in the realm of zoning. Something is proposed for zoning, you know, you realize that the code doesn't address it properly, you need to act temporarily, so you give it an opportunity to study the issue and develop proper language to address it when it does come before you. So, an interim ordinance allows you to put essentially a pause button. We need to take a look at this. So, you look at it, a study is required as part of that process. You study, you come back, you take whatever action you need. So, it's just a temporary measure so you can act to protect the city, frankly, and, and it comes off. As I mentioned, cities generally have this authority, but because you have the two reading process, you know, a normal ordinance takes months, and in that time, you may have an application before you, and once that application process starts, there really is no stopping at that point. So, this gives you that opportunity to act quickly, to say, "We need to study this." And so, you study it, take whatever action you need, so then, when the application does come in, you're prepared for it. The codes have been corrected, any oversight has been, has been addressed. So, that is authority that, in my humble opinion, the city of, of Crystal should not be disadvantaged. You should be on the same playing level as other cities when it comes to the ability to enact an interim ordinance. The amendment and repeal, so the language talked about having to publish in the newspaper, underline and strikeout, or in bold, and, and, you know, the reality is, that's antiquated language. The, the city publishes summaries of, of its ordinances that it adopts. We typically do not adopt or publish the underline and strikeout, so it really just doesn't accord at all with your normal procedures. Now, to the extent you wanna publish a proposed ordinance, an amendment ordinance, well, you would publish it with the underline and, and strikeout. So, this doesn't take away a publication. Publication is required by law. You do publish any ordinance that you, that you adopt, but like all cities, you publish a summary. You don't publish three pages of ordinances in the newspaper. So, that's just cleaning up some language that really doesn't change how you function at all. As far as the special business district, the speaker is correct in that it doesn't specifically say how the levy or, or service charge are allocated, because that's a decision you make based on the type of service that they want. It may not be fair to, to do it equally. I mean, there could be a business that has, you know, 50% of the area of the district. Well, it wouldn't be fair to then have the person next to them that has 5% pay an equal, equal amount as a person that has 50%, or, you know, play with the numbers, whatever. But the point is, when that comes before you, that's part of the decision the council would make. And again, this is already in law for, for towns, where that comes in, and then it's up to the governing body to decide how best to allocate, and whether it's gonna be a levy or if it's gonna be a service charge. So, that's purposely left to be decided in a case-by-case basis. So, you can hear what it is, look at the circumstances, and then make a decision. So, that's, really, that's the way it ought to work, because if you, if you bound yourself to a strict equal division in all cases, you may find yourself not, you know, again, my 5% example, it's like, I'm never gonna petition for that, because I don't wanna pay equal to, you know, my, my neighbor here who has the majority of whatever I'm asking for. Be happy to answer any other questions you may have, but frankly, we talked through these issues at the charter commission, and as you recall, multiple times at, at the city council, so, for what it's worth, my recommendation would be to proceed without amendments.
All right. Any questions from council? All right.
I just have a comment. We put a lot of work into this. I mean, we've been working on this throughout the summer, back and forth between the charter commission and also work sessions here at the city. Matter of fact, the last draft went to the charter commission. There were some, some nuances that were, that they found that needed to be updated as well. So, it's not something like, this has been a work in process all summer long between both the charter commission and the city council. So, I've been very impressed with the information that's come out of it, and also how it just, you know, just updating the charter overall, because a lot of it was rather antiquated. So, it's been a real positive move.
All right. Thank you.
And just to thank Troy again for clarifying the reasons for this, because somebody who hadn't been involved, or a neighbor who had just seen this in the council packet, may wonder, why was this added? So, I know we've been going through all these readings, but I think it's helpful to clarify and understand and answer any questions or concerns about these ordinances and changes. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during this testimony? At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing for testimony, and I will entertain more comments and questions. I just wanted to make sure we wrap that, that little procedural thing up. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, just again to remind the council, your charter went, last went through a comprehensive update in 1989. So, it's been a little bit.
Yeah, that's right. All right. No more comments, no more questions. Looking for a motion? John?
I'll make a motion adopting ordinance 2021-04, the comprehensive amendments to the Crystal City Charter.
All right. Looking for a second? Brendan?
I second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Looking for summary language?
I'll jump in. I'll make a motion approving the resolution for summary language for publications of ordinance number 2021-04.
All right, thank you. Brendan?
Second.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Regular agenda. Here we go. First item on the regular agenda is the disbursements of $25,000 or greater. Read those into the record at this time. Logist for the Joint Water Commission and Utility Fiber Project, monthly support and hosting, $92,552. West Metro Fire Rescue District for the October contribution to the West Metro Fire Department, West Relief Association, for $110,140. Construction Systems, Inc. for new police building costs, $86,845. Kraus Anderson Construction Company for new police building project management, for $267,432. McDowell Company for new police building costs, $126,473. Peterson Companies, Inc. for new police building costs, $48,660. Veet and Company Contractors, I didn't pronounce that right.
That's okay.
It's, it's, by, by Company Contractors for the new police building costs, $180,075. West Metro Fire Relief Association Fire Aid from Minnesota for $276,400. And Minpara for the employee and city required contribution from payday, 10, 15, 21, $62,671. Total disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $1,250,857.94. Questions on any items on this list from the council? Does everybody know what that Relief Association one is? Nobody knows? Somebody knows? Do you know?
You're asking me if I know what the Relief Association?
No, what that is there.
Well, I was hoping that maybe a board member might be...
What, the Relief Association?
Yeah.
Yeah, what is that, $276,000? Ann knows.
I do, I do.
Why don't you share that with us, Ann?
It's, right, it's the money the, the fire district receives from the state for insurance, from a chunk of insurance money that is a pass-through to the Relief Association that goes towards pension costs.
I was just gonna say pension, but...
But you didn't.
No, that's a better explanation. It's just the pension.
Yeah, and that comes once a year, this time of year, and that just, that's a flow-through that really isn't anything that we, as, as taxpayers, fund directly. So, it's just, it's kind of an unusual when that comes through here, and I just, it's important to remember that one.
I think every year, when we have the fire budget, we, they kind of give us a guesstimate. And then, then they, you know, they, based on last year, was this amount. We don't know what it's going to be, you know, and, yep.
The numbers, the numbers come in, in September, but we've already done the budget. So, what we see is, from the fire department itself, is the budget numbers that they're gonna have to come up with, 'cause it doesn't match what pension is.
Right.
There's, there's usually more pension than what is provided through this pass-through.
Sure.
And that's why we see it there. Yep. All right. Any other questions on any of these items? Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures over $25,000.
All right, looking for a second? Nancy?
I'll second.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next, we'll consider a resolution authorizing execution of a development agreement for the Crystal Flats subdivision. John Sutter is our community development director, and he's here to discuss that with us.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Adams, councilmembers. You may recall that the subdivision was approved on September 9th, and as part of that approval, there were some very specific infrastructure plans that needed to be constructed to facilitate development of the two new homes in the subdivision. And the, kind of a normal, typical follow-up part of that approval is for the developer to enter into a development agreement with the city, whereby the developer will guarantee to construct the required improvements, the water, the sewer, and so forth, and provide a financial escrow deposit, or some type of financial surety, to ensure that those will get done. And so, that is what is before you tonight. Staff recommends approval, or adoption of the resolution that would approve the development agreement consistent with the plans previously approved.
All right. Thank you, John. Any questions on this item? Nancy?
In light of letter I on page two, with the, the pending lawsuit based on the memo that we received on the council with potential impact, depending on the outcome of that, I wanted to see if, or propose that we hold on voting on this for 30 days to provide time for that update on the lawsuit.
Okay. I'd like to hear from Troy on that and see how, how relevant that is. Do you have any idea?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor and council, delaying action on this means that the property, the development cannot move forward, and I can tell you, you're not, there's, I can be here 30 days from now, I'm gonna say, yeah, there's really no update. You know, there's been a scheduling hearing, you know, that sort of thing. So, you're, that's, the lawsuit's not gonna be resolved for a long time. So, if, if the city were to stop with this process, you're essentially stopping your approval and, and stopping them from developing their problems, which, or their property, which could create legal issues for the city. So, it's, it's like approving a building, but then not issuing the building permit. You know, at some point, it's, you know, you need to allow them to, to move forward, because there wasn't approval provided.
The reason I asked was one of the potential risks that was brought up in the memo about...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Keep in mind that's an attorney-client memo.
Okay, okay.
So, it's, I mean, go ahead and ask your question, but I would recommend, I would not refer to...
I didn't wanna quote from that, but it was just a potential risk that I, when I saw that, I thought, wow, that could be huge to the developer, if, you know, and that's why I wanted to see if, if we should pause for 30 days on this vote.
So, Mr. Mayor and, and council, yeah, the delay really doesn't help anything, respectfully, because a lawsuit like that could take several, several months. I mean, really, we could be here two years from now.
And it's helpful to know the timeline. I didn't know how long it takes for something like to, to go through.
Right. And, and certainly, it's a legitimate point, and it, and it's one that frankly, the developer needs to consider for himself.
Yeah.
And so, that's, you know, it's like, we're letting you know, you know, if, if you wanna proceed, fine. We're gonna do our part as a city. Again, as I mentioned, you can't just stop from the cities, because the approval was given. So, now it has to proceed from the city's perspective, but his decision to proceed is his. So, that's, that's on him.
At their risk.
Right.
Thank you. The developer was named in the lawsuit as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Troy.
Sure.
Thank you, Troy. All right. Any other questions regarding this one? Comments? Looking for a motion on this? John?
I make a motion approving the resolution for the development agreement for the plat of Crystal Flats.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a second? Oga?
I second that.
Thanks. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please?
Councilmember LaRoche?
No.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next, the council will consider two resolutions regarding Gulkey Pond Stormwater Project. One is approving the plans and specifications, and the other is ordering the ad for the bids for this project. So our public works director, Mark Ray, is back again.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Recap of the work session. Scope of the project, dredge the entire pond, we'll have a consistent bottom of 862 feet, lower the normal operating water level by 2.73 feet to 864.5. That'll leave a standing water depth of about two and a half feet over the whole thing. This'll add over 3.8 million gallons of stormwater storage in our system. We're also going to be relocating the pumping structure out of the flood risk area and then increasing the rate of pumping from 3.2 to a maximum of 11 cubic feet per second. Schedule work. Bids are open December 1st. Council will consider contract authorization December 7th. Contractor has until late spring 2023 to complete the work. From a communication standpoint, we've done numerous mailings already to the properties around as well, as well as talk to residents. Additional mailings will occur once the contract is approved and a construction timeline is known. The budget, 1.6 million for construction, 350,000 for professional services, the budget is $2 million. Again, on the north side, it kind of just shows you doing a lot of grading work, building an access road for the vehicles to come in to haul the material out, and then the storm piping and pumping system, kind of on the north side of Fair School, into the city of Robinsdale for a force main. So with that, two action items for the council. Motion to approve the resolution approving plans and specifications for the Central Core Stormwater Project, and a motion to approve the resolution ordering the advertisement for bids for that same project. Are there any questions?
Questions? Nancy?
It's just a geeky graphic designer one. Can you go back a couple maps? I just wanted to see what that blue line is.
Hold on. Which one?
Uh, two.
The red one?
Nope. One prior. Yeah, what's that blue line?
The blue line is the ordinary, wait, should be ordinary high water line.
Okay.
That line is actually the vein of my existence because that's what drove what properties we had to contact for impacting lowering the water level.
I didn't know if that was a service road or something. I was just curious. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thanks, Nancy. Second. Brendan?
Yep.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay? Motion carries. That's a fairly short agenda, isn't it? Oh, we got another one.
Is it the same?
Same.
I'll make a motion to ordering advertisement for bids for the Central Core Stormwater Project.
Awesome. Brendan, second? Okay. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay? Motion carries. All right. We do have some announcements. Reminder that the offices will be closed Thursday, November 11th, in observation for Veterans Day holiday. Next council meeting is Tuesday, November 16th at 7:00 PM here at the council chambers at City Hall. You can attend via Zoom. City council will hold its next work session Thursday, November 18th at 6:30 PM here at the council chambers. City offices will be closed also on November 25th for the Thanksgiving holiday. City councils and work sessions, just a reminder, they're open to the public, and you can view previous and current meetings on our website at www.CrystalMN.org. Any other announcements? Thank you. I was going to say, we need Julie back for announcements, but, John, go ahead.
I was just going to make a motion for a German.
Oh, there you go. Done.
Oh, can't beat him ever. I'll second.
Thank you for that. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay?
I already said aye.[1766.15]